I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting in Zions City Council. Clerk, please call.
Commissioner Flamini?
Here.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Harrison?
Here. This evening we have Pastor Dave Adams with us to offer us a word.
Let's pray. Our gracious and loving Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this gathering, the freedom that we have here tonight. Father, we thank you because we know that you are the giver of all good gifts. Father, we thank you for the way in which you have blessed this great city. We thank you for the many wonderful things that make Zion so very special to all of us, Father. Lord, we thank you for our leaders who are here tonight, for their giftedness, for their wisdom, for their leadership, and for the many ways that they have cared for the precious people of this community, even in ways that we don't even know. Father, we thank you because you have led them and you've protected them, and we pray that you guard them and guide them. Father, we pray, as they discuss many, many things tonight, Lord, there's many decisions to be made, and there's much wisdom that is needed. And, Father, this room is full of a diverse group of people, all kinds of ideas, all kinds of thoughts, Lord, we pray that you would channel them and unify them. Lord, we pray in the end ultimately that you would give us your wisdom, your thoughts, and your guidance. May they lead and they serve with integrity, Father God, and may they keep in mind all of those who have placed their trust in these leaders. Father, we pray that you'd give them wisdom to know exactly what to do tonight, and we pray that you'd give them the courage and the integrity and the boldness to carry it out, no matter how difficult. Father, ultimately, we pray that your plan and your purpose would be successful in Zion. We want you to be successful in Zion, and, Lord, may you have the glory and the honor that is due unto your wonderful name, and we pray all of these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Would you please join in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is for agenda changes. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Item J.
Okay.
Delete that, please.
Yes. Deleting item J. Any other agenda changes? Carry on. Is there a motion for the amendment to the agenda?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda, deleting item J. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item five, citizens' comments. WC Bremner, Zion.
Thank you, sir. Honorable sirs and gentle ladies, please bear with me, I have a touch of laryngitis. I'll try to get through this as best I can. I stand before you to thank and compliment Director Colangelo. Last Tuesday, my leaves had not been picked up, I called him and left a message on his cellphone. Friday, he returned my call and explained the leaves had not been picked up because they were waiting for the maple trees to fall or something. He was on vacation. He took part of his valuable vacation time to return what might be considered a petty call. I do thank him and I applaud him for wasting his time to call me back on such a small matter. I want you to know how very thankful I am for Director Colangelo and his service to me and to your community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Maria Valencia? Yes, Ms. Valencia?
Yes.
Please come over. Is it?
Oh, I don't think she realized she had to speak.
Oh, okay.
She was just signing in because she was here for a variance request.
Oh, okay, very good, very good. We will take care of that on the agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmen, good evening, mayor. Glad to see you back. I'm a suffering Bears fan. I bought my jacket, so I'm gonna wear my jacket. But I am a suffering Bears fan. Now, I'm here for Stand For Life, a live play about breaking the chains of hate, insecurity, and envy. And when all men knows is death, how can he stand for life? Can love, hope, salvation free him? Come see this play and find out. A fun and touching community experience full of love, hope, and change and encouragement. This is Saturday, December 6, 2014, at 6 o'clock at Christ Community Church, Christian Arts Theater, 2500 Dowey Memorial Drive. And I was asking the council to sponsor this play, but I understand that I was told don't ask because y'all ain't gonna sponsor it, so it'd be a waste of time. But I did bring flyers for each one of y'all, and I have tickets because I'd like to see y'all there to support this event. It's a community event, and I won't tell y'all, but I'm gonna style the play. I got some more. If you want a ticket, I have tickets here. If you want to sponsor, you can, but we're really putting something together here, and it's a gospel Christian good play. So I want to ask the councilmen, consider December 6. I don't ask for y'all for an afternoon, but it's at 6 o'clock, and we over there at the church. I ask you to come out, shed its love with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Clyde.
I got tickets.
Okay.
Good response.
Certainly.
Clyde, I just want to clarify one thing. I did not tell you, don't ask.
Oh, well, okay.
What I did tell you is that there's no money in the budget for these things, and there's a difference in my mind, so I just want to be sure that everybody understands.
I don't understand how to put things on agenda. When I got here this evening, my clerk, Ms. Diane, told me I was too late to try to put it on. But you can sponsor this play, and I will leave one here just in case y'all decide to be a sponsor, and you know, because we do got some people that, like we got State Attorney's Office, the Coroner's Office, they all sponsor, and this is held in the city of Zion, so I'm gonna leave one and pass it down, all right? Have a good sponsor for this play. Thank you. Thank you. See, it wasn't that bad.
It's always a play.
Item six is the consent agenda. Would clerk please read the consent agenda into the record.
The current minutes of regular meeting, album number four, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. Approval will not be released until section two of the article number four, 2014, at 7:43 p.m. Bills, Dodgers, 119-567 through 119-789, donor first merit bank, total one million nine hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars eighty-two cents. Financial report for six months ending October 31, 2014.
If ready consent agenda, is there a motion for the approval of the consent agenda? So move. The motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
The motion and a second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item seven, consider passing resolutions as follows. Item A is requesting the designation of Lorelei Drive from Illinois Route 173, Ninth Street, County Highway A4 as a federal aid urban route. Commissioner, do you understand?
Yes, I do. Director Colangelo had to run to Florida because he heard snow was coming. Given resolution requesting the Lorelei Drive be designated as a federal aid urban route. The resolution will accompany the city's submittal to IDOT for reclassification of Lorelei Drive as an urban collector road. This reclassification has been approved by the Lake County Council of Mayors, and this is the final step in the process for IDOT approval. Once Lorelei Drive is reclassified, it will be eligible for federal funding through the Service Transportation Program. Staff is recommending a request to approval of this resolution. What this means is it would make Lorelei Drive available for federal funding for resurfacing and maintenance and things like that.
Very good.
Doesn't cost us anything, but it makes us eligible for grant money if it's selected.
Sure.
And I would move that we approve this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second for this designation of Lorelei Drive as a federal aid urban route. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item B is a truth in taxation law resolution. Director Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You had before you the resolution, under the truth in taxation law, if we increase our levy by more than 5%, we're required to have a public hearing. What we're doing here is just putting the resolution out there showing what potentially we could levy for. Under the tax cap rules that are in place and the limits that are out there, the highest we could go for represents a 4.3% increase over the prior levy. My goal would be to put out there that we publish this as the maximum amount available. We have frozen or reduced our levy over the past couple of years, but to get out there the most that we could go for, which represents a $270,000 increase over prior year, but over the course of between now and December 16th, when we would actually pass the levy ordinance at that point, that we would have a discussion to figure out where from that cap to where we're at now is the right number to fall at. The $270,000 increase across all of our funds, just the police and fire pension funds alone, I anticipate that those are going to go up about $350,000 that we're required to levy for, which means if we go after this 270, that we're going to have to levy 350, which means we're going to have to cut somewhere else even if we go after this. But again, we'll have to have a discussion of as far as taxes go up to the public, where do we, you know, where do we fall in there as far as continuing to freeze the levy versus going up to the maximum caps under the law? So I figure I'd rather start with the highest potential and back off than put something out there lower than it'll go in the future.
So we're not being asked to take action on anything right now, this is just?
This is for public notice as to the maximum potential.
Public notice to let us know the potential of what?
Right. Require 20 days in advance of the levy ordinance to put an amount out there that's a potential to show that we're not going to exceed the truth in taxation cap.
Okay, very good. This is a resolution that should be passed, actually. Is that correct? Yes.
Yes, Director Nabel made a reference to it when he said that we have to have some discussion between now and when we actually do adopt the levy, what that number's going to be, and I think a workshop would be appropriate. I would really like to set a date while we're all here now, or at least tonight at some point, if we could set a date in the evening when the public can come and hear our discussion because when we, and my thoughts on this, when we had the audit, there was reference to fund balances that we have carried over, and when we talked last year, we said that we wanted those fund balances to be used for putting out so we could generate more revenue from those fund balances and actually keep money coming into the city. If our levy is, needs to be raised, I think it behooves us to have a discussion about whether we want to spend that money for actual operating expenses and face the kind of losses a year later, or whether you'd be ready to levy now, but I think we need to have a workshop about that, and I would really like to set a date tonight if we can.
Let's see. What is the next? What is the next? Is it a particular Tuesday night or any particular night, a better night for us, Tuesday, a week from now? And then Director Nabel, could you have something prepared for us to chew on, if you will? Maybe just before that? Give you six days to put something together, or five or six days to give us something to look at to be able to discuss it intelligently a week from today. Would that be?
Anything by the end of this week.
That would be ideal, but if you feel, you know?
That's doable.
If that's doable.
Could we go the first week of December? That would give us, that'll be two weeks. Oh, then we have a council meeting. When can we do it before the council meeting?
You'd be able to do it at 6 o'clock before the council meeting.
6 o'clock in the council meeting night?
Yeah, that's not a township. That's not a township night. 6:00 p.m., two weeks from today.
That would give a little more time, and we'd still have two weeks to before the 16th.
Sure, and then to look it over and see what's there and what we need to do. All right, two weeks from tonight at 6:00 p.m. then. Would that be all right? All right, very good. We need to pass resolution. Council, what is the resolution exactly saying?
It's just stating.
Just stating that we're?
Right, what the projections are now and it's representing a 4.3 increase, so there is a public hearing that is required, but you will have a public hearing.
Okay, okay. Is there a motion for this?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item 8A is consider zoning dock at 14Z13, requesting a tax amendment to Section 102 to 128, subsection 5, to allow parking within 600 feet of the nearest point of the principal structure in the central business district. Director Ryerson, could you shed some light on this?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. With the number of buildings that have zero lot lines in the central business district, potential new businesses cannot meet the current parking requirements. The code states that all parking spaces shall be located on the same lot as the building or used served, or within 300 feet of the nearest point of the principal structure. Staff is recommending that we increase that footage from 300 to 600 feet of the nearest point of the principal structure in the central business district only. This would give new businesses more access to ample parking. At the November 6 meeting, planning zoning recommended approval.
Is there a motion?
I move approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item B is to consider zoning dock at 14Z14, requesting a variance from Section 102-202 to D to widen a front driveway by seven feet for a property located at 1409 Yale Avenue as petitioned by William Valencia. Director Ryerson?
Thank you, Mayor. William Valencia, 1409 Yale Avenue, is seeking a variance to widen his driveway and his front yard by additional seven feet. He's looking for additional off-street parking. Current code allows off-street parking in the side rear yards only, so he's looking to use additional parking in the front. At the November 6 planning zoning meeting, they recommended approval.
And this is a page?
That's correct. They want to extend the pavement by seven feet.
By seven feet?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I would move that this motion or that this variance request be denied.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the variance request. Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor, I guess I hesitate to any time vote against what the zoning board of field recommends, but what this does is allows for parking in the front yard of the house. There's a long parking lot on the side of the house, and you want to expand it so the parking can be done in the front of the house. It's my understanding that when I went there and looked at it, there are some neighbors that already have that, but I think it's a dangerous precedent to set, and I think that I would be, I don't think we want to see this happening all over the city where people are widening their driveways and parking in the front of the house. I think that, I just think it's a bad idea.
Commissioner, I'll admit, I didn't get to see this, but does this area that they're seeking to extend, does it connect to a driveway that goes to a garage or anything else like that?
It's, there's basically a residence with a driveway next to the residence, there's a fence next to the driveway, so they can't widen it that way.
Ah, okay.
And it's a long driveway, I'm guessing you could get five or six cars in there. You know, that is a hassle, getting the cars in the right order so that they come out the right order in the morning, but there are plenty of places all over the city that has that, that have that same hassle, and I just think that it would be, I don't know how we could allow this, and then when another resident comes in and asks for the same thing, that we would deny it, and I don't think this is something that we want to see throughout the city.
I concur. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
The motion was to deny.
So I deny.
I would need to deny.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item C is consider zoning dock at 14-Z15, requesting a variance from Section 70-74G to allow a 36-inch high height?
Yes.
By six-foot-long, multi-colored, non-flashing LED reader board for a property located at 121521 Street as petitioned by James Critchett. Director Ryerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Critchett is the owner of the Dairy Queen on 173 there. He's asking for a variance to put up an LED reader board below the DQ-IQ sign on the timeline next to the front of the building there. Does currently meet the setbacks from the intersection, so he's not looking to flash or have any fluttery lights, he just wants to display menu specials and so on. Dairy Queen's got those.
I'm sorry, it would be part of the existing menu board, or would it be out at the corner?
No, it'd be on the pylon sign below the DQ.
Oh, yes, okay.
Right below that. He had a manual sign there, now Dairy Queen nationwide is updating all their signage throughout, and this is one of the signs they recommend it, but he had to give a variance to put it in.
Okay, this would be similar to what we allowed, for instance, Culvers to do.
It's a sign of the times.
Yes, yes.
Planning zoning board recommend approval with conditions, not displaying any flashing lighting or fluttering lights.
Okay, which could be a road hazard for traffic, drawing their attention away from?
His intent is to just rotate messages for daily specials.
We have a part of the ordinance in front of us, which part of there are you actually asking for a variance from?
For the multi-colored flashing lights, basically, even though we put a condition on it, the multi-colored. We really don't have anything that addresses LED in our sign ordinance, so something we'll have to address.
That was the basis for my question because it doesn't really seem to be in violation of this as it's proposed.
As it's proposed now with the condition, yes.
I move approval of the variance request for Section 70-74G, dock at 14-Z15.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item D is tabulation of bids for cleaning and maintenance services at City Hall, Police Administration Building, and the Public Works Building. Director Ryerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Bids were open on November 10, 2014. Attached are the proposed bids. You will note that one responsive bidder was lower than the bid of the city's current service provider, VMG Quality Services. Crystal Maintenance Services' bid was 1,067 less per month, 12,804 less per year. Four of the seven bids were non-responsive as no janitorial service bond certificate was supplied as part of the required bid documents. When considering who is the most responsible bidder, the city council has great latitude. We may consider the relationship with the city as established with the current provider. Staff agrees that VMG Quality Services has a good work history with the city, has provided good and consistent service at all facilities, has proven to be reliable, goes above and beyond performing extra tasks when asked, and is a local Zion contractor, can provide prompt response emergency situations. We believe VMG Quality Services has earned a preferred vendor status. For these reasons, we recommend maintaining the services of VMG Quality Services. However, because of the potential savings that could be realized if the bid was awarded to another contractor, I respectfully defer to the city council.
Thank you. What is our pleasure? We went through this a year ago.
I move approval of awarding the cleaning contract to VMG Quality Services. That's my motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. I would just like to say that there have been, there are numerous cleaning services in numerous governmental bodies all over the city, and I think it's really important, especially when you have the kind of sensitive material that we have in the police department and here at City Hall and the finance department and elsewhere in the city, that when we have a relationship where nothing has been amiss with this company at all, and I've seen other governmental bodies change the service, the cleaning service, because of a dollar figure, and then things turn up, missing, things disappear, and so it's very, very important. I agree with this completely that we keep.
You spoke much more delicately than I could have spoken, and my whole basis is on, I've talked to the city employees, and it's exactly what you said, it's the trust factor that they have with this cleaning service. So I know it's a significant amount of money, but I think we need to, I think they're great.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item E is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council, Patrol Officers, Sergeants, and the city of Zion. Chief Tummin.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Under the current Sergeant's Labor Union contract, Section 9.10, minimum manning, whenever there is not at least one sergeant scheduled to work a shift, a sergeant shall be hired back in the order of rank of seniority at the appropriate overtime rate to fill said vacancy. In order to address a temporary manpower shortage in the sergeant's unit due to the extended injury leave of Sergeant Arrington, the city of Zion and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police have agreed, under limited circumstances, any officer above the rank of sergeant may fill portions of unanticipated absences and fill portions of a sergeant's call day. This is essentially an extension of the previous memorandum of understanding approved by the city council that addressed a temporary manpower shortage in the sergeant's unit due to the extended injury leave of Sergeant Loether who has returned to full duty. Please see the attached memorandum of understanding for a detailed explanation of the portions that may be filled by any officer above the rank of sergeant. The union, myself, and the finance director recommend the city approve the memorandum of understanding as this is the best course of action and can reduce the amount of overtime paid for this temporary vacancy. I respectfully request the city council approve this proposed MOU between the Sergeant's Labor Union and the city of Zion.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of this memorandum of understanding. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison? Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item F, request permission to purchase a bullet-resistant transaction window. Okay. A bullet-resistant transaction window for the lobby of the police department from Metal Tech Fabrication Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $7,800. Chief Tumey.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I respectfully request the City Council approve the purchase of a bullet-resistant transaction window for the lobby of the police department. This has been a safety concern for quite some time. We requested three quotes from vendors and two proposals being received for the bullet-resistant transaction window installation and finishing work to include the replacement of some faulty lighting at the window. We are recommending we use a proposal from Metal Tech Fab Incorporated from Chicago Bulletproof Systems out of University Park, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $7,800. This is a most reasonable and thorough proposal. This is not a budget item, and money from the drug asset forfeiture fund, which has seized drug money, will be used to purchase the bullet-resistant transaction window and the installation and finishing work. I did put a contingency in there. If not to exceed $7,800, I anticipated coming in at about $6,600. We do have some work that we're going to try to do ourselves with public service. If that, if we're not able to accomplish that, that would increase the bid up to $7,800.
Commissioner Dutton?
Yes, I move that we approve the request to let Metal Tech Fab from Chicago Bulletproof Systems to install the bulletproof window not to exceed $7,800.
Very good. Is there, do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Yes, Commissioner?
I would like to request that the staff evaluate a lot of the other offices in the city to see if there is any other security concern that might just kind of come to with this. And I think you might need to look at the finance department, perhaps the building department, and any other place in the city that we need or something.
Very good.
Agree with you.
I agree. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison, excuse me, Mayor Harrison?
Yes. Aye. Item G, consider approval of holiday stipend for paid-on-premise staff in the fire rescue department. Chief Lewis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Since may our paid-on-premise program has proven itself to be successful in achieving our staffing needs in more economical fashion, one area of concern for staffing is going to occur with major holidays. When we do not meet our minimum staff and due to scheduled benefit time by our full-time staff and the lack of availability of our paid-on-premise, we may be in a position to force full-time staff in at a double-time rate. The holidays we're concerned are outlined in the local's collective bargaining agreement, and so to improve the chances of paid-on-premise personnel picking up these days and prevent a full-time employee from being forced in at double-time, I am requesting that council approve a stipend for our paid-on-premise personnel that work any of the holidays listed below at $100 per 12-hour shift. Based on our current salary expenditures and foreseen scheduling for the paid-on-premise personnel, there will be minimal impact on our current salary line item. The total cost of the program moving forward into budget years would be comparable to the cost of one forced-in employee at a double-time rate based on rank and year's service. I respectfully request approval of holiday stipend for paid-on-premise staff effective immediately.
Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve this stipend for paid-on-premise staff only in the fire rescue department. And a second. Discussion. Yes.
Chief, how many paid-on-staff would be coming in on Memorial Day?
One.
Just one?
Yep. It's always going to be, we only have allowed for one paid-on-premise at a time.
Okay. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item B, is discussion on the update on the status of debt certificates being issued for the purchase of property at Route 173 and Green Bay Road. Director Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to bring before you an update on what was approved at the previous council meeting. The preliminary official statement that we approved at a prior council meeting showed that the debt certificates would be going to market, seeking a 10-year term at a rate not to exceed 5.5 percent. Obviously, that's based on if somebody will buy those bonds and buy that certificate. They would do that, however, it would be at a higher interest rate. They were able to come back to us and say, we could do a five-year term with a balloon at the end of it at 3.55 percent, which keeps our rate down, and then we had a chance to refinance those after a year.
After one year?
After one year. We could start the process of looking at refinancing, and obviously, depending on what we would do with the property within those first five years, you know, that would be advantageous to us versus under the 10-year term, we were able to refinance it after five years. So we told bond council to proceed with that at the five-year term. We just wanted to give the update to council on going forward with that.
Thank you.
Wes, what's the savings in the first five years between 5.5 and 3.55?
Well, we, under the five-year term, we're actually able to, we're kind of able to set our principal interest payment, and then it just goes on to the balloon at the end. So we kept the principal payments around the $280,000, which is what the taxes were. So if we weren't able to do that, you're looking at about $80,000 to $90,000 difference just because of the interest rate annually.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Item I is asking to consider approval of incentives for employees meeting wellness screening criteria. I think I understand that. Director Dable?
If you do understand it, I'll make sure you don't by the end of this. All right. You've got before you kind of a lengthy memo. About a year ago, we implemented, the city implemented a wellness committee to try and look at just overall health of employees, looking to try and get our health insurance claims a bit under control. We're self-insured when it comes to health insurance. We go through Blue Cross Blue Shield or whatever insurance provider, get the network discounts, but then we ultimately pay whatever the claims are. Part of the idea of getting these under control was we started offering free health screenings to employees, where they could go and do a blood draw, answer surveys, things like that, to potentially identify, be proactive about potential major health concerns so that, you know, we could identify a high blood pressure, a high cholesterol issue before it developed into a condition that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars of medical claims. As a result of that, we got 54 employees take that screening out of the 100 and so they were eligible. Everything is HIPAA-protected, there's no confidentiality issue, but they were able to provide us a summary report saying that there were specific areas that had potential for improvement. So the next step of this was that we wanted to offer an incentive to employees that improved in those areas. So we picked five, what they call biometrics, which is blood pressure, body mass index, cholesterol, HDL ratio, triglycerides, and glucose. That if employees that took the screening last year to this year, if they improved by more than 10 percent in three out of five of those, what we would do is we would offer, we would pay 10 percent more of the single employee premium. Basically, for a single employee on the policy, we would pay 100 percent of that premium. For employees who are a single plus one, they would get the same dollar equivalent as an individual, and the same thing with family. That would come to about $1,000 a year annually of benefit. And just based on those 54 employees that took the screening, if they estimated that it was about $120,000 a year of health claims related to these conditions. So if every employee improved and got healthy in those areas, we'd be looking at about $54,000 of cost annually to save potentially $120,000 of claims. Not to mention such an overtime from sick days, you know, all the other intangibles, stress on employees, for covering shortages, things of that nature. So since it's a benefit, an additional benefit, that's not currently in personnel policies, I would rather bring to council for proposal. We would be able to do this for any non-union employees if you approve this tonight. We would have to approach the unions to make sure that they would be in agreement with this. The warning in those contracts would basically say that they're also eligible for whatever incentive benefits there are given to other employees. So if at any point in the future, we weren't seeing savings from this, or it wasn't getting generated, we could back off of this without any repercussion to us. That's the 30,000-feet approach of this also.
So what were we asking for specifically?
We're asking for authorization to offer this, the council to approve this benefit to employees that meet the criteria spelled out in this memo.
Yes, Commissioner, I had a question, though. I have to run a ten. So the cost of this is then is estimated at approximately $1,000 per employee that meets the criteria, and the cost was included as a budget item within the self-insurance fund. The calculated savings and plans for employee that meet the healthy criteria would be approximately $2,000 in claims annually, resulting in an ongoing net savings to the city. Is there any way we can, I mean, the only thing that scares me here is that that is calculated savings. I would be a lot more comfortable if we tied the incentive to the actual savings that we see overall in the plan. Like, if we don't get $2,000 per employee, then, you know, maybe it's only $1,000 per employee on savings.
I don't know that we'd be able to do that because, just because, you know, God forbid, one of our employees is going to have a heart attack next year. We have no idea whether that would happen or not, whether we prevented that condition to generate that savings. You see what I'm saying? They do an actuarial calculation based on these conditions are estimated to cost $120,000 annually.
Okay. They're not saying that the $2,000 savings is going to come this year.
Right, right. They estimate $120,000 annually, whether that's on, you know, going to ER for, you know, heart palpitations, or trouble breathing, or untreated diabetic conditions, things like that. So they do a study and say, there's probably $120,000 annually of cost relating to these five areas that we could save annually, but we can't specifically identify individual employees that would generate those savings. We would just see a general trend in our claims decreasing.
Right.
If they didn't, we could pull this as a benefit.
That, I guess that's what I wanted to, I wanted to ask, that is there some way that three or four years down the road, we can go back and say, did we meet the goal of saving $2,000 in payouts? And then if it's, if it's more than that, we could even give more incentives to save money. But if it's less than that, I just think we need to track it somehow, so we know whether we're being successful.
Yeah, we'll be tracking whether the trend of claims is starting to level off or decrease based on healthier results.
I think it's a great idea.
Are those a motion? Form of a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
All right, we're good.
So whatever it says here.
Whatever is in, yes, whatever. We're in agreement. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Departmental commentary. Nothing?
I have one for us, though.
Yes.
As of September 30, and with assistance of Public Works collected about 80 tons of electronics, the electronics recycling program. We are, we account for about 5 percent of the collection of town, even though two of our closest neighbors have established their own programs, which should, in theory, cut the amount left with us in Elwell, Keegan, and each park. So the electronics are not going away. We're collecting more and more and more. Unfortunately, there's a very good possibility the program might end in January.
Really?
So we'll see what happens with that. So if you've got it, I would say get rid of it now.
Yeah. So we have two more dates in December, possible dates, or are, rather, December the 6th and closer to the end of the month. Two weeks after that?
First and third.
First and third Saturdays. On November 27th and 28th, the city offices are closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. December the 2nd at 7:00 PM is the Zion City Council meeting, and the electronics recycling is December 6th, 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. And then December 16th, 6:30 PM is the Zion Township Board meeting, and at 7:00 PM is the Zion City Council meeting. Thanksgiving is just around the corner, and if you have the wherewithal and you would like to donate something for a family that is in need for the Thanksgiving holiday, please do not hesitate to contact the township office. Sherri Neal is our township supervisor, and I'm sure that the funds could get to the proper agencies to help to feed families at Thanksgiving time. On a personal note, I'll never forget going and delivering baskets at Thanksgiving, delivering baskets at Christmas time, and as long as I live, I'll never forget, children coming to the door and screaming, "Daddy, daddy, it's food." Not gifts, not toys, not, "Daddy, daddy, it's food." And that will stay with me forever. So if you have the wherewithal, and I know a lot of us do, please find an agency that you can help, to help others during the holiday, and all during the year. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
Second. Clerk, please call.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Thank you.